We are not removing the requirement for parking. Parking will be required as per the parking article in the code.
Can I repeat that one more time?
We are not removing the requirement for parking. Parking is required for, per the article on parking in the code. We're just taking it out of check for seven, which is the zoning ordinance. We're trying to eliminate confusion by having parking requirements in several different zones anyway. We are not revising the parking ordinance. We are only removing the resort commercial required parking, which it really only discusses retail, two spaces for two hundred fifty net retail square foot, excluding storage and back in the tall center. Parking article in the zoning code has lists and lists of uses that and what their parking requirements are. So we're really just consolidating the parking requirements to one article and removing it out of this. As I said before, Nathan Howell and Big Nuna from the Planning Commission, if there are There was a minor in the packet. The staff report was correct. The proposed ordinance did strike out under one side setback and some of that setback. We mistakenly dropped out unless adjacent residential district. It's ten feet setback and twenty feet with some side setback. So we had to correct that and send that to our committee and town manager and supervisor. So hopefully that's clarified. Do you have any questions for me? I look forward to hearing the comments.
Actually, I read something today about thirty-five feet height limit could be affected by these changes. When I read over it, I didn't see any change to the thirty-five.
No, yes, no proposed changes to height.
A procedural issue. I want to make sure that both of these amendments have been properly referred to the planning commission for their recommendations. You state that you reviewed, but they've been referred and recommended recommendations.
Yes, August twenty-sixth. It was before the planning commission and their recommendations were stated.
And they held a public hearing?
I believe Mr. Nelson spoke. We have it on Zoom if anybody wants to.
Catherine, could you explain the floor area ratio, what it actually means and what we will see built between point seven five and two point oh? And the striking of the minimum twenty-five percent open permeable land, why is that in
The floor area ratio is density. So the square footage by by the square footage of the lot by by the square footage of the building. So point seven five is less dense. They want to increase the density to be able to get something more along the lines of the condos that's very high density versus single family home or single residential, single retail building. So it allows them to build up. The twenty-five percent open permeable land coverage, that's, I don't know where that came from, but it's, it's in opposition of the maximum lot coverage of thirty-six percent, which is dictated by the Chesapeake Bay ordinance.
That's what we have is thirty-six percent. It's in there.
So just trying to help me visualize, right now, if you had a thousand square foot lot, you could put a seven hundred and fifty square foot building on it. Is that correct?
Sounds right.
I'm using really, I'm using really round numbers, so. And if, and if we had, and with the new one, if we have a thousand square foot lot, you could put a two thousand square foot building on it. But you'd still have to meet the, any permeable land requirements, which I think now are thirty-six percent without mediation.
Correct.
Can you tell us what mediation might look like to allow for more coverage?
In flow wells. They're what we, the Chesapeake Bay ordinance, it describes vast management practice, which is some sort of engineered process in which to handle the storm while we're on.
Thank you.
I'm going to open up a public hearing at this time and then we can open the motion for more discussion.
I apologize for this because it's been in the last millennium that I actually dealt with any of these issues by myself. And I think it's the first zoning issue we've dealt with since I've been on council for a while. So my query is this, what's the origin or genesis of these requests for amendment? And I'm talking generically, not the one of this specifically with the, with the amendments we're dealing with in this case.
I believe the zoning ordinance does state the process and procedures in which text amendments can be brought before the council. It can be derived from staff, town manager, and/or planning commission.
Well, can, can individuals propose and how do they do that?
I'd have to look, but I believe they can, yes. They can propose text amendments.
And was, was there any specific request before these amendments?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes. We have asked two.
Anything else before I can?
Oh, this is a question. Are these, are these changes in line with other organizations that we are working with to improve with downtown area?
Yes. At the planning commission, I did show some photos of other towns in Virginia that have zero setbacks and more density. We also looked into their regulations, their zoning regulations in terms of the setbacks and they, they were in line with that. As well as a document that I was provided with today from the Main Street organization
Is this a PowerPoint, Catherine?
Yeah.
Yeah, I sent it to Heather, the, is that the old one? I sent you a later, they were one.
Questions? We had a public hearing, they had the community comments week at the planning commission.
Okay, I'm going to move forward to public hearing because there's a long agenda still to go and then we can come back to more discussion, more questions. So I'm going to open the public hearing at seven thirty-two P M.
Mr. Vaughn here has just pointed out the problem with what's going on here. It looks like what I said earlier, there is things that are going on behind the scenes that aren't being disclosed to the public and which the public has zero channel input. What I heard tonight was that you are considering an amendment to the zoning ordinance that has not been before the planning commission. Someone has changed it and what's being voted on tonight is not the same thing as before the planning commission. The zoning ordinance is only one thing, but there's another thing too, and that is the setback side and some, some of the setbacks is not zero, it's five. So you're moving on something that hasn't been before the planning commission and needs to go back down. In terms of the scenario, this is in fact, zoning has been requested by the developers specifically for developers purposes. I, the mayor, will remember when I stood at this podium about two weeks ago and asked for documentation to verify who, according to the towns represented in their submission at the work session and the end of today, that they had been working with developers, builders and property owners. That is not a true statement. They have not worked with anyone with regard to this amendment with the exception of Dodson, no one else. In fact, the county administrator just told me the first information she had from anyone other than a developer was something she got in email this afternoon. I haven't been consulted. There's not a single person I've spoken to in the RC district that has been consulted with. And answering Mr. Vaughn's question, I already provided it to you on July twentieth, Dodson group requested these changes, the exact changes that you're considering. All you got to do is put the two documents side by side, which I've done for you already, and you'll see the changes are the exact same changes that Dodson has requested. I'm not here as a Dodson advocate or enemy. What I'm here is for the process. The community hasn't been spoken to, the people that this is going to affect haven't been spoken to. It is time to stop this behind the scenes, growing on and talk to the people that are being affected. I want to answer, address one very specific thing, and that relates to parking. You guys are taking a heck of a lot on faith. The parking ordinance specifically says that except, except as otherwise provided in this ordinance, which is the entire zoning ordinance, not Article thirteen. You are striking out of Article seven relating to the RC district, the requirement for parking. So it now is as otherwise provided in the ordinance, there is no parking requirement. If you want to do this right, let's do it right for a change in the same.
Thank you.
That the ordinance should be included within it, that the parking is as specified in Article thirteen, as opposed to eliminating it.
Mr. Serby?
Steve Serby, twenty-one hundred and thirty-four. I learned a lot about this change, those two ordinance changes this past week. I do remember when Robin was looking at Main Street setbacks, I was just considering that traditional neighborhood design support was something I'm an advocate of as well. However, most of our resort commercial area, which is only our downtown redevelopment area basically, is really not set up for these brief pictures that we have up here. I would like, based on the information I've been receiving this week, I believe that you need to table any further changes to the resort commercial because resort commercial only pertains to the area downtown that Dodson is the majority to work in. And all of their changes to page two and three went from historic renovation of hotels, excuse me, historic office renovation, mixed Houston Hotel, to tourist home duplexes and cottages. Under each one of those definitions in the ordinance, it talks about transient, transient use. When you go back to thirteen, the new now famous parking article says that transient activity in any zoning district or for any use has no requirement for parking. So I want you to understand, you have to look a lot closer to these, these zoning changes than you, the ones that we're making right now don't seem to be a big deal, but we don't have them all tied together properly, sort of work together. And I know when we were looking at approving the sale of property and the development agreement, we were looking at what the uses were going to be in the residential commercial at that time, and it did not bring us to think about transient under cottage definition, under duplex definition, and/or under forest home definition, because that's the only place the word transient really came in. We were looking at commercial reuse, mixed retail, so on and so forth, when we were looking at accepting that. Hence, why I brought up earlier today, would be actually know what the plan is so that we can kind of evaluate the changes that we're making to zoning ordinances and thinking about what the new concepts are for these areas because they are changing. And it's already proven that they have changed because, you know, page one changed. So I just can't caution you enough, these minor changes, as they seem to be in an ordinance, especially zoning ordinances, have ramifications as to how they're written, similar to what Mr. Vaughn said about referencing the article, okay? I know we reference the article for landscaping in every zoning ordinance, every zoning type, but we don't reference parking, go back to thirteen. It basically only lists by type of use the parking in thirteen that may be in any other article in the zoning ordinance. But when you look at the word transient and take the definition of transient back to the zoning ordinance, back to Article thirteen, everything changes. So again, I would really like to see the council and the planning commission take a step back, let's get a better picture of what's going on in that specific area. We're not talking about zoning that affects the entire town, it's the one area that's the most important of all.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks very much.
All right, Mr. Rata, did you have the email?
This is from Mr. Rata. Says to the council, I am the managing director for the Artist's Alliance Art Gallery at one eight hun, at one hundred Taylor Street, directly across from one of the Dodson development sites. An art gallery has been at this site continuously for fourteen years, since Carl and Joyce Thor opened Jarrett Thor Fine Arts. I am writing to express my shock and anger about the less than fourth grade manner in which the town government has put forward this proposal for a zoning change. I'm afraid it is being done at the behest of the developers to relieve their obligation to rent off street parking, and it will come at the expense of existing businesses and organizations already in the area. The problem is simple, downtown businesses require convenient parking for staff and customers, so does every other entity in the area. We were already concerned that the construction was going to erase the parking lot across from the gallery where customer parking has provided, have been provided for fourteen years. But to see that the proposed revision to the ordinance requires the developer to provide no parking whatsoever threatens our business's survival, as well as that of every other existing business. If anything, the developer should be required to provide additional public parking to compensate for what has been lost. What is the advantage to the town for this and the other concessions the town is making such as eliminating setbacks? It is disappointing, to put it mildly, to see a zoning change being put forward that town residents and businesses have not had enough time or opportunity to review so they can research it, research its implications. Town government says downtown businesses were consulted, but our gallery was not consulted, and I have heard the same from other businesses. Does the town have something to offer us that will compensate for this loss of parking space? While a parking garage will help relieve parking pressures overall, for retail store customers generally prefer, prefer to park nearby to pop in for a short while. That's what the reserved parking spaces for downtown businesses offer. Now that too is being eliminated. Who do these zoning changes help? It certainly isn't downtown retailers.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Okay. And this one is from Ms. Joyce Reimer. Letter to the town council and townspeople of Colonial Beach. My name is Joyce Reimer, former president of downtown Colonial Beach, and I need to apologize to the townspeople and town government for helping to perpetuate a misunderstanding. It's about the zoning change coming up for a vote at Wednesday's council work session. Parking issues were mentioned in the proposed zoning change they will be voting on, and parking is an issue that can get even the calmest of us agitated and irritated. So when it looked like a parking regulation was going to be changed to the detriment of our downtown retailers, I and others hit the roof. What we didn't realize is that no parking regulations are being changed at all. They are just being pulled from separate ordinances and consolidated in chapter thirteen, which deals with parking regulations. The setback issue is a little more complicated, but my understanding is that it permits businesses to build closer to the street to give that attractive street scape appearance, while making it possible for trash deliveries and such to occur behind buildings. Our architect mayor learned this concept from a training she attended on a small scale development from all places. Virginia Main Street, I must sheepishly confess, Virginia Main Street is downtown Colonial Beach's parent organization. I guess we all need to work on communicating and explaining things more clearly, and we could probably reduce our tendency to ascribe sinister intentions to everything our town government does. In trying to be efficient and get things done, we can all slip up in the communications department, but then as the British shade, British say, get it sorted out. I hope you will forgive me for contributing to a misunderstanding that got people upset, but it's good for us to be alert and on guard to protect our beloved community, just so long as we try to eventually get the right information so we can make sound and informed decisions and recommendations to town officials. Contritely, Joyce Reimer. Okay, is there anybody else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at seven forty-four. Do we want to have a motion, a second, and then further discussion?
I move that we adopt for the, for the purposes of more discussion. I'm not saying that I endorse it at this point, I just move for the adoption.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, so further discussion, I think there's a lot more. Did you find that PowerPoint, Catherine, because that was helpful? And I was really out of it, but I don't have it. Heather, do you have a PowerPoint?
I sent it to you. Okay, so first, it's similar to PowerPoint that, it's similar to PowerPoint. I just added a couple of slides, slide eight is a map showing zero lot lines, existing buildings, including Mr. Vaughn. Next slide is some photos of downtown where there are existing zero lot line properties and buildings. And then slide ten is from the Main Street Approach Handbook, Economic Vitality Design That was the document I was referencing that is in support of what is proposed. And slide eleven, I just took from that document. Flexible zoning does not automatically turn a commercial district into a free-for-all. Main Street and other community leaders should create recruitment plans to help create an ideal downtown business mix. And then slide twelve, zero lot lines, zero lot line zoning is virtually important for Main Street districts. Slide thirteen, parking is still required for Article thirteen. And fourteen is the, I tried to blow it up. It's still hard to read, but it is on our website. Okay, and in addition, I did provide an email a day or two ago from Mr. Vaughn, listing the five or six businesses, developers and/or property owners that I've discussed this with, if not just that, that I have had discussions with. I explained that I did not have, I did not do a study, I did not try to contact every business owner, but I did list the several different entities that I have had these discussions with. I did also check in, oh, I just opened up section, chapter, Article nineteen, our zoning ordinance describes the, to answer Ms. Sullivan's comment about the process for text amendments. Amendments to the text zoning ordinance may be initiated by motion of the planning commission or resolution of the town council. Such resolution or motion of the planning commission or town council shall state for the public purpose of the proposed text amendment. So, you know, somebody can come and talk to planning commission or council or staff, staff would bring it to the planning commission. The planning commission did have a public hearing. What's before you is what the planning commission recommended. The five foot versus zero foot, it was staff's recommendation to have a five foot setback. Planning commission decided that they wanted a zero setback, and that is what's before you tonight. That is what was adopted, approved and recommended for adoption by the planning commission. They also changed the F A R from, it was recommended by staff to be one point five. Planning commission recommended a higher density at two point eight, and that's what's before you this evening.
And what about the five foot unless adjacent to residential district? I'm sorry. The thing about the residential district, they did not recommend us to strike that, correct?
Correct. I had incorrectly had it on the draft ordinance.
Okay, so.
With the staff report and what their recommendation is, is to leave it as the part about the residential district.
Okay, and that was all followed procedure in public hearing. There's the other things that were brought up. So I know I'm very familiar with Mr. Vaughn's FOIA request and the information provided him unfortunately, and FOIA is, it is still not a complete picture because all you're getting is text that went back and forth and not everything that just occurs in the natural process of doing the work. But I just want to make sure that it's clear that there was also Dodson, you know, we asked for their input, their input was given about what they would like. It included things that are not in this, including the height restriction, which is not in this, including that reduction of parking, which is not in this, and including adding condos or duplexes as a buyer right use, which is not in this. And so the kind of catering to the developer concept is not, I mean, if that was really the case, all of those things would be in this and they're not. I just want to point that out because I feel like that is a narrative that is easily used. And holistic viewing of zoning is important and the training that's been referred to by, you know, several people that I went to and that Steve knows that I went to, that was very specific about how to make downtowns actually capable of investment, because most downtowns are dying because they are not capable to make the figures work. And so zoning ordinances are in the way of these things. Zero lot lines are, are typical, very normal, and I don't know, in Warrington and downtown Fredericksburg, these are all, this is a normal part of a downtown district. In fact, it, you know, D C D says increasing floor area ratios is extremely useful to support the value of the land. I mean, all of these things are very Main Street friendly zoning. This is not, you know, I think it's just easy to tout that and it's just not the case. The other part about the parking, I understand the transient section of the parking language. However, those cottage complexes, and they can have brand ideas of all kinds of things. If they want to do things that require conditional uses, they still have to do that process. This does not absolve them of doing whatever they want by any means. If they want to go and do something that requires a conditional use, they're going to have to go to the planning commission, they're going to have to follow that process, the planning commission is going to The planning commission is gonna have to vet it. There will be yet more public hearings, um, before approval of that happens. Uh, tourist codes are already by right in, in the, you know, code. Uh, whether that meets the development agreement is a separate situation as to this zoning amendment. Um, I'm gonna make that clear. What we're talking about right now is a tax amendment towards zones, not the development agreement. Dotson, I think they've been letting it a little bit. Um, other things. Uh, I know Mr. Rodeck is concerned about street parking. Uh, there will be no effect on street parking at this time that we know of. Um, this change in this ordinance certainly does not change the effect on parking. Changing this ordinance does nothing to that. And in fact, the only part that it said, as we've pointed out, was that there was a requirement for retail, but there's a whole bunch of other things that you can do in R C. So that one little sentence isn't really helpful at all, actually. Um, I do like the suggestion of saying to refer to Chapter thirteen for parking. I think that's a fantastic suggestion, and it should be there. So I would like to suggest to amend the ordinance to include that. Um, and I get...I also understand the want for more retail downtown and incentivizing retail. That's gotta come in different places, though. Things like the economic incentives that we passed and are working on, things like bridging out with, um, the P D C group and, and going after retail and drawing them here, the market study, the R C D I work. I mean, we have to go out and do that. And that's what I think that one slide was talking about, Kathleen, that you put up there was, um, the text from Main Street, is that that is up to us to make happen. We have to make it viable, a viable retail place, um, location, economy, and that we can do that as community leaders to recruit. Um, and incentivizing that, and I'm one hundred percent in support of trying to draw in and recruit and incentivize in particular about retail. Yes, Mr. Vaughn?
Just a comment of concern that, you know, it seems like some nefarious purpose is being ascribed to the individual asking for zoning change. Whereas that's done all the time. I mean, that's what individuals do when they want to develop. That's what lawyers do when they help out individuals. This is nothing new. Um, so I hope nobody thinks that Dotson's trying to do anything behind the scenes. And also the idea of behind the scenes, we're in a public hearing now. This is open to everybody to make comments. There's no behind the scenes. Just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, Mr. Vaughn?
I see three possibilities. One is that we would table this and send it back to the planning commission. However, I was at the meeting last month, and they held a public hearing, and they sent this to us. So before we did that, I would like to hear from them on the subject. The other option would be to vote it up or vote it down.
Vote up, would say.
Right. Wanna call up the planning commission?
Yes. Um, at our last meeting, we...
Can you come to the mic, please?
Good evening, Victoria Luna, Chair of the Planning Commission. Uh, we held our meeting last month and heard the, um, uh, request for amendments. And, um, we, um, had a very thoughtful, very in-depth discussion about the amendments and the tax amendments. Um, and also wanted to give some historic background in terms of where we were when we looked at this. Um, back maybe two, even two years ago, we started looking at the fact that, for example, the parking, um, ordinance is mentioned and referenced in four or five different sections of our code. And, uh, Richard Douglas, our then, uh, planning director, mentioned that we needed to consolidate that. And so when this came before us, we determined that that was something that we needed to do. It was something that we had planned on, um, looking at. Um, so I think that the discussion about, you know, why are we doing this now really doesn't provide you the background in terms of where we are and what our intention was. Um, the density issue of, uh, increasing the bar from one point five to two point oh is something that we, the commission itself, addressed and brought forward. Um, we were, I think, even more aggressive in terms of looking at the density needs for the downtown area. Um, and in terms of zero setbacks, um, we're looking at the examples of other small towns in the state that have had great success in doing that. And, um, our own town, we've got many examples as been described here. Um, so I think that, um, we're really looking at conforming to, uh, what it is that we are learning from agencies like, uh, Main Street. And, um, so that was basically our discussion. Um, Nathan, if you'd like to add some stuff?
The intent of the revisions that we had was not specifically towards Dotson, even though that was what the impetus was for the original review. What we're looking at is, in the future, as planning commissioners and as the visionaries and the people who take the feedback from the community, first, shameless look. We had a public hearing in our last planning commission meeting. Everybody, please come. That's exactly where we need to be hearing this stuff. We've already, uh, had meetings and open public hearing clubs for ever coming to the conference. It's a great opportunity to have Mr. Vaughn.
When is he gonna come to me? Uh, planning commission here and talk.
Okay, I'm not starting a back and forth discussion. We called up, we're here.
So we were taking into consideration the future views and character that we are conveying through the plans that we are bringing out, for the character that we want to have in this residential commercial district. And so by adopting zero lot lines, by consolidating the parking into the one area and increasing the ratio, we felt was, uh, the best practices at the time or our time for development and planning in these intensive R C kind of districts. So that's what the intent of the review was. So it's not specifically for any one party, but it's to encourage the character of the development for future use for the next ten to twenty years. How we want new buildings and complementary structures to be portrayed as we develop and keep the character that we have, but also develop it into something that's attractive.
Any questions for that? Is there any?
Well, let me be very clear. I'm, uh, at least disturbed that this request came from Dotson. I'm gonna make that clear about. Uh, I think we have something of institutional interest in his success and the success of every other commercial venture in Colonial Beach. Uh, and I'm not convinced by the arguments that Sarah has. But what I am concerned about, there's two things, sort of, well, we're hearing parking, parking, parking. That's going to be a constant drumming. And at some point, we genuinely need to get a handle on that deal with. And that's going to color every other issue that we're dealing with in this town until we do. Uh, I am concerned a bit with these proposals that there are unintended consequences. And I clearly don't have a handle on that, so I'm not comfortable with this, that we dealt with that. But we're...I guess we have to use your name.
Do you have any? Ms. Roberts?
Yes, what do you think?
Listen, I...okay. Um, yeah, I couldn't agree with you more, uh, about tackling the parking problem. And do you wanna speak on where we're at on the parking?
We've been researching some other localities of our R S P size and scope. Um, and I drafted a draft R S P that will be hopefully hidden in the streets in the next couple of weeks to come up with a comprehensive parking study. Uh, I would also say that we can look at some other opportunities to either apply for a grant for various parking opportunities, whether it's a paid parking lot or a sealed parking garage. Better than the initial stage. Um, but we do need to have some parking data on that before we can even move forward. Um, as it relates to that, I will say over the last couple of weeks, we've had some traffic counters in town through the Labor Day weekend, as well as anticipated for the VICESS weekend, so that we can get some accurate numbers and data after working with Chief Bruce and some of our other public safety votes in town. Um, as it relates to those significant parking problems in our downtown core, but throughout the town as well. So having an accurate picture of the number of vehicles that come into town during special events, during our peak season, as well as our off-season, will help us have a better handle as it relates to what our future planning on parking will be. Um, hopefully, we'll get some of that data back and be able to make any changes or updates to our parking study or parking plan, um, our current parking plan for parking season.
Um, I also just wanna, uh, reiterate that this has been discussed at, um, at the planning commission since July. As soon as the, uh, as the request came to bring this up, Kathleen asked me to talk about it at the planning commission. I got up and spoke at the mic at their, it was a public hearing, or was it public comment that week? I can't remember. It was months ago. So, um, this is not just like kind of an all of a sudden thing. This is, we're at the end of September, we're almost in October. Um, but it was introduced pretty much immediately as it was presented to be taken up. Uh, it wasn't like a lot of gap from... Okay, is there any other discussion about the changes? So the changes include deleting that line that doesn't make any sense and is in conflict with the regulations for Chesapeake Bay Act. The changes include rear, side and some side setbacks as recommended by the planning commission to be zero feet, even though actually the request was five foot some. But they are recommending zero. Uh, taking out the all-street parking retail requirement, or not take out the actual requirement, but just, uh, instead, I would like to recommend that it references the parking chapter, Chapter thirteen, and increasing the floor area ratio to two point oh. Is that a good summary? Should make sure it's very clear of exactly all of the pieces. I don't want anything to get lost. I know this thing records me, right?
Wrong. Let's all add a Karen's motion. Uh, are there...we need to do an amendment?
I think we need to do an amendment that clarifies the adding of the reference to Chapter thirteen. Was everything else is, is as presented by the planning commission, correct? Okay, so do I...do I have a motion to amend it to add the reference to the...for the second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that?
No.
Okay, so we wanna vote on the, uh...
We're gonna vote on that.
Well, we can do it all in one again, just like the last one. Well, you now have a motion on the floor to amend the original motion. So if you want to withdraw that, that subsequent motion, and Dr. Self-Sullivan could accept the amendment to her motion, then you can do it all at once. So whoever made the motion to amend the original motion, if you all wanna withdraw that and Dr. Self-Sullivan is willing to accept a friendly amendment, then we'll vote.
I'm glad to withdraw.
Okay.
I'm glad to accept.
Okay. So now we can do a friendly amendment to pass as... It's already the...
As you just stated, yeah.
Yeah, her motion has been amended to include your suggestions, um, kind of mayor. And so that's the motion on the floor. Okay. Um, any further discussion?
Just that I think this is a good move for Colonial Beach. I mean, I think having buildings close together and working like a commercial area is certainly a plus and makes perfect sense. And I believe we should be all going ahead and voting on it tomorrow.
One of the biggest reasons that I'm so excited about the Dotson development agreement is that we have these missing pieces. We have these missing...it's like a puzzle with missing pieces out of it. And that we're gonna have an opportunity to fill the rest of that puzzle in. And this is really a critical part of that. I want them, beautiful puzzle. Oh, yeah. All right, I'm gonna do a roll call that's been at this time. Mr. Duggan?
Uh.
Mr. Ryan Caret?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Cavery?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Dr. Self-Sullivan?
Aye.
And... Next up is Stormwater Management Plan C, the President. Kathleen, you are busy. Thank you, everybody.
So, um, I've been working, you know, as a administrator, planning director for, for, uh, closing year now. And I've been looking down to, in that entire time, I've been working and trying to figure out all the requirements in Chesapeake Bay Act and stormwater management, um, the requirements of site plan development review. Um, it's very, um, intricate, I guess you could say. In terms of Chesapeake Bay Act, stormwater management, um, we have resource protection areas and resource management areas, um, but this is pertaining to the thirty-six percent lot coverage. When a, um, building development is proposing to exceed the thirty-six percent lot coverage, there are stipulations in the Chesapeake Bay Act that state that you can do, uh, what we talked about earlier, best management practices, meaning like, uh, in, uh, flow well. Or some type of engineering device that will make your, uh, stormwater. These, um, requirements are, uh, nobody will review them except, um, the county. It's not in our contract for the county to review these. It's not in the, uh, the E Q won't review anything under two acres. So almost every plan that I've come across in the few years I've been here, um, we have to review it. And we don't have an engineer on it, except I'm not an engineer. So, um, we, as staff, to require ourselves to contact or request for, um, information. And I use the, uh, Virginia D E Q website that lists all the certified stormwater plan reviewers. And I sent out to, uh, territory, uh, different companies. Specifically, I wanted to use a company that doesn't do a lot of business in town because they will be reviewing plans that are submitted, um, to us for review. So, um, I didn't want any conflict of interest in terms of somebody reviewing their own work or having to find another engineer to review that, which is in the past for the practice. And the, uh, of all the requests for information that we got back, the best, um, request or the best proposal was from, uh, I believe they're called N C I. And they, um, gave us a quote of three twenty-five, three hundred and twenty-five dollars per review of a site. Currently, our stormwater management plan review fee is a hundred dollars. So before you this evening is a request to amend the fee schedule in order to raise, uh, stormwater management plan review from, from one hundred to twenty-five.
This is a discussion point this time. Yes, Mr. Vaughn?
I'll go back to my argument that I dealt with this the last millennium. Uh, when are these fees paid and by whom are they paid?
Um, after plan review for a zoning permit, prior to issuing a zoning permit, we collect, um, a number... a number of fees in terms of, say, of a new home. Stormwater review, address, new building construction, zoning review, and that's what we collect, prior construction and prior to then going to the county for a building permit.
So I have a question. Is there a plan to get a qualified engineer on the staff at some point in time? And if we did, would we then bring this fee back down or...
No, then we'd be paying for that person.
Right, but you're paying a contractor, so you're paying him his overhead too. So I mean, what would be the commensurate? I don't need an answer for that, but if we do plan on bringing on an engineer, I mean, I think, I think that's been discussed before. Kathleen has the require, the need for some engineer that's dedicated to this town. I mean, Mr. Murphy, I don't know if you've got some thoughts on that?
It's actually a stormwater plan review. You get certified for stormwater plan review. You can get certified for inspection. And there are actually three components, but it is test work, not necessarily an engineer, which is our qualified plan reviewer.
Which is what we listed under the alternatives. An alternative to raising the fee would be for a current town, you will need to obtain certification in stormwater plan. It's costly, it's time consuming, and but Kaylin, our planning technician, and I are both willing to do it, but it will take some time. You're both signed up to take the class in December. But the class, the test, and the prep is...
But I don't think, your department does not collect enough fees to pay for your department's budget anyway.
Right.
Right. So you see what I'm saying in the rubber fee schedule? Do you see what I'm saying? Okay.
I have two questions. If we're processing the permit and we are, we are currently charging a hundred to do that, and we want to up it to three twenty-five, and we're going to pay all of that three twenty-five to an independent contractor, should there or could there be more of a fee to cover the staff's time in managing this? And I guess it's a question for Vivian.
The short answer is yes, you can, the fee can be whatever you deem appropriate. It does not have to directly tie to what you're...
And my other question is, and this is the first time I've heard of this, but is SDI, Sullivan, Donahue, and Ingalls? In full disclosure, my son-in-law is a partner in that firm, but I didn't know anything about this.
You just dropped on.
When you're from here, you're related to everybody all along.
Okay. I see Karen's point. I also think that if we're going to take this stormwater situation seriously, that we need to take the review of stormwater plans, especially new development, very seriously. We need to use a professional to review those things, and I think paying for that is appropriate, but I also think charging for that is just the reality of the 21st century that we live in now. We have more development coming, things that are going to, that are even more important that stormwater is handled correctly on. I mean, I would almost, you know, say to make it four twenty-five instead of three twenty-five. And I say that not trying to burden the contractor, as I obviously was with many of them in my own professional life, but if we need to focus some serious energy and effort, which we're going to have to pay for, then we're going to put ourselves in even worse situations. And so the burden at this point is, there's a burden on us as a town, as an existing infrastructure, but for new development, we need to be really focused on.
It also addresses an issue that I've heard from many constituents that have been, their house, that's an older house, it's been here for a while, and somebody has come in and built a new house on a vacant lot next to them, that there had been, that has increased their stormwater issues, and by putting this in the hands of a professional, I think that would give more confidence to those people that may be affected by new bills.
Because do they come out and do on-site inspection?
They would not. The county does.
Oh.
As they are, the county, in our contract, the county does the stormwater management inspections.
So the plan would be...
Not plan review.
Right. The plan would be reviewed, and then it would be the county's responsibility to ensure that the plan did happen as proposed.
Correct.
Any other discussion on that?
I think it'd be important to note, though, that, I mean, Karen, as you said, it's, you know, somebody's yard may be impacted, but you can still be in compliance with a stormwater management plan and still get water from a neighbor. That's not going to admit, you know, negate any of that from happening, because stormwater is supposed to stay on the ground and seep and move towards ditches. It doesn't necessarily mean it's gone away from the area completely. So it's, I don't want to give people a false expectation that we have a guy that, a person that reviews this thing, and that means that there's no chance it's going to come on your yard. I fully expect if anything built next to me, that I'd probably have to plant another corkscrew willow or a birch tree to soak the water up. But it's, I mean, I don't want to make it sound like this individual or this position's going to prevent that from happening anywhere.
I do believe that, and this is not my field of expertise, but that the state of Virginia has some sort of requirement that says new bills can't change the flow of water to where it is detrimental to the adjacent property.
Right. You may not change the flow of water, but it may not soak the water up as much, and so you're not, you're going to have potentially standing water somewhere that didn't exist before, but doesn't necessarily channel to that person's house, so.
Any other discussion?
So, yes.
Yes, no?
So three twenty-five, four twenty-five.
I would recommend going with the four twenty-five, the section mission, and taking that extra a hundred dollars within the reinvestments with their classes, so that in the future, we can have that if we want staff and then keep that money in house.
Think that education, supporting that education.
Does that mean we lower it when they get to education?
I mean, the county has been charging two ninety since when?
I don't know how long.
For years, Kathleen.
Years.
We've been charging a hundred bucks.
I like the DEQ charges. DEQ also charges two hundred.
Yeah.
On top of that?
On top of the county's charges? No, separately.
Separate, separate, yeah. The DEQ does two acres plus. The county does their own, you know, in the county.
They have somebody on your bounds, yeah.
So have we been losing a hundred and ninety dollars every time we issue a permit?
Oh, we're losing money every time we issue a permit regardless, because the staff's, the permit fees do not cover the cost of the planning department.
Yeah, I know that, but we're charging a hundred and we're paying two ninety to a third party. That's different from the cost of our staff doing work.
I don't know exactly how previously the payments, maybe we could, or somebody financed it, look and see how we were doing, but I know we were using Jeff Allen for some, but then when he would apply for a site plan for new construction, and it was over that thirty-six percent, we didn't have any way to review it. Rob Murphy did coordinate with the county on several, several projects to ask them to review it for us, but it's not in the contract, in the contract between the county and me for them to do that. She was basically doing us a favor. Recently, they've lost one of their stormwater management reviewers, and they're swamped. They just cannot help us. But yeah, we lose money, because we spend a lot of time coordinating, sending these plans out for review, whether it be DEQ or the county that helped us out in the back, and just, you know, back and forth with the engineers of, yeah, who is left.
So last question. One, when would this go into effect if we decide to do it? And then how does the rollout occur to notify the folks that are going to be impacted by it, so they don't just show up at Kathleen's office tomorrow and all of a sudden now it's, oh, I didn't have that much in my checking account?
Well, I think the how soon does it take effect will be a question.
And I'm looking, I would appreciate, I need to check the state code to see if there are limitations at the state level, because there are, it's very complex, and I do not tend to know these off the top of my head. There may be a cap at the state level. I know there are for state agencies and who does what, and if the state participates and helps you out, then a part of the fee goes to them, and there are fee splits and all this kind of thing. So I think it would be prudent to let me make sure.
Yeah, we can't...
This is just a discussion, anyway, we're not getting on this tonight. This is just to bring it up, to say it's a problem, this is, you know, we're going to use a consultant, they're going to charge us three twenty-five, we're bringing in a hundred bucks. The real cost of this is obviously significantly more than that. You know, where do we find a place in the middle?
Are we currently also paying a separate inspection fee for stormwater inspection? Or is it grouped in with their, the county's inspection fees?
That's the county's...
So the builder pays that, the builder pays that to the county?
They will, they will, they will, it's a bill, it doesn't say which is much.
It doesn't break that.
It just lists how many inspections they're doing. Yes.
And the answer to the last question is effective date would be run away once adopted unless you, unless you specify a specific effective date.
Well, I think it's important that this just continues to the next work session at this point, and that if we're going to adopt something, we do that at the following regular meeting, because that will give some more time for input and public awareness about the issue, and so that people aren't just coming in Kathleen's door and saying, hey, all of a sudden it was this and now it's that. I mean, that's going to happen regardless, because we cannot obviously privately call every single person, but it just gives some more time to digest it, and then also a proposal to understand the educational process, to get somebody on staff that is certified to do these things. Okay. All right. All right, I'm moving forward. Resolution thirty-eight, wait, is there any other discussion? I don't have anybody else. Okay. Thirty-eight twenty-one, encouraging the B.TAP grant application for the Excursion Pier Terminal. I wish I had brought a picture of the old Excursion Pier. If you've ever seen, have you ever seen the Remember Wing book over in the library? Anyway, if you haven't seen the Remember Wing book in the library, you should please go do that. There's the only place that I know of that they did, and it's all about Remember Wing, Colonial Beach, with this and that, and the Excursion Pier. It's a town pier. It's in everyone, everyone, so. Okay, go ahead. Who's reading this into this? J.C.?
Yes. First, I want to thank the council for amending the complaint earlier. I really think that's going to strengthen our chances for both applications. So this first one was on the pier, and I already mentioned as part of the complaint like we did earlier, the main purpose, which is to briefly summarize, we want to outfit the end of the pier, upgrade it, and make necessary repairs to allow large vessels to stop at the pier and board and disembark, I guess, off, yeah, passengers, to help spur tourism, and I think that'll also support, along with the economic development efforts we're having in town. There's going to be a demand for waterway transit that has not been for some time. I think it's an opportunity to go forward and go backwards, what I mean is, it's progress, but it's also a part of our history. I'm really excited about this project. But yes, that's the main purpose. Fiscal impact is, the total cost is two and a half million dollars, and we are seeking the maximum grant award under this program from B.T., which would be two million dollars. And so, yes, the financial requirement would be a half million, yes. But so, we also, as part of this, this resolution is required by the grant application, as it is public comment, so I hope someone's here to say something nice about one of the grants. We did have a paper, and I received, well, you had in part of you, two letters of support from the Planning Commission for each project. I attended their meeting on August twenty-sixth, and the commission unanimously supported the project. And I should point out that I was discussing fiscal impact, this is being first for both grants, so if we did, if we were successful in our application, we would need a way to finance the projects initially before we get to the budget.
They're not, they wouldn't be slated to start until 2024.
They're slated for basically year twenty-three, twenty-four.
So they're... Yeah.
I'm a little concerned about J.C. being as successful as he is at this point, because we're looking, well, we're looking at half a million dollars for this, and I'm looking at him as the town manager, and we really need to get a handle on how we're budgeting or contribution to these various grants. Obviously, half a million is a pretty decent chunk of change, and I don't know over what time we're budgeting or how many years we're looking at, but if he continues to be as successful as he is, we really need to look at grant match funding as a component of the budget.
Yeah, I agree with that fully. I think we have a better shot at the second one than the first one, and I would like to also, and I know Tim left our supervisor, but in that one, it was hopefully a partnership with the county on the match to reduce that. Okay. Yeah, maybe, hey, if we get both, then I'll start making hot dogs at the town hill and selling them.
Yeah, I'll pop the pot.
Okay. You'll pop pot one. Yes, I am sorry, you're right. I have to open a public hearing. Nobody was signed up. Open public hearing at eight-thirty P.M.
Can I say one last thing real quick?
Nope, we're in a public hearing. Yeah.
Hi, Susan Mack, fifteen forty-one, Irving Avenue. Question, does this extend the pier or just refurbish the pier?
The content is both.
Pardon?
Both.
Because you're talking about deep-water vessels. I would think it would need to go out a little farther in order to accommodate deep-water vessels. Does it involve dredging at all, or is this just extending to a point where these vessels are able to access it?
This is very conceptual at this point.
Gotcha, thank you very much.
Wait, are you support?
Sure, yes.
Put that in public comment.
I do, I support.
That's a J.C.'s little bit of a... Okay, yes, Mr. Nelson?
Yes, I also support it. I had a long-time business in Alexandria and became very friendly with the folks that do the water taxis and that sort of thing in Alexandria, and it was such a cool thing to do, to ride the water taxi from the baseball stadium to the downtown Alexandria area. I mean, it's such a cool thing to do, and if we can figure out some way of connecting with other communities around here like Cobb Island or others, I think it's a great idea. I think it's very cool. And if we can actually bring people from D.C. the way they used to come on the steamships, I think that would also be great, so it's an awesome idea.
Yes. Yes, David, please.
Yeah, I just want to say I'm definitely supportive of the pier, but...
Yeah, I just want to say I'm definitely supportive of the pier, but I feel a little bit concerned, I'm here to say something about extending. I've walked down that pier several times and there, the olive posts all the way out are practically hollow. So, um, I'm very concerned that we don't, we need to address that as well.
It's refurbishment also.
Okay, good. And also, yeah, definitely make sure that you put a place for water taxi because, or at least places for both to park because that's one thing we do not have for our businesses in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close public hearing, so you know further contact. At eight thirty-three P M. I know it's also discussed, I mean, we haven't brought this part about it, but the, you can, um, you can charge those vessels for processing their sewage. And that was something that has been discussed in this concept previously. The former mayor talked about it all the time, actually. Getting paid for their poop. So, uh, anyway, it's a little aside, but I just throw it out there, there's some alternative for, uh, benefit for both the waterway transit person and for the towns involved in this kind of project too. Is there any further discussion?
I would, I can, I absolutely endorse going for this, um, TAP funding. One of the things that hasn't been mentioned is there's an awful lot of recreational boating that's done on the Potomac, and we don't get any of those boaters coming to our downtown area. They have to go to the marinas, they have to pay for a slip, um, but to have a place where boaters that are out there on the water be able to say, hey, let's stop in and go to Colonial Beach for lunch, or go check out what's going on at the new shop. I mean, that could increase our downtown retail business considerably.
Yes. Yeah, I couldn't agree more, actually. It's a missed opportunity, the, um, boaters traveling up and down the Potomac who absolutely love to just dock somewhere, to get off and buy things. They love it. I love it. Also, uh, the mayor of Indian Head, Mayor Polwin, uh, is building a terminal right now in Indian Head. He's doing it, millions of dollars, he got a grant. So, hopefully, uh, we're working through that Comrel thing for collaboration, and he wants to use his brand new dock that he's doing. So, if you ever get a chance to go check out Indian Head, it's under construction right now. Okay, um, any other discussion? Are you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Sorry, I know we don't have to talk about it beforehand, we need to go out of order. Um, all right, we'll do a roll call vote. Doctor Phil Felver?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Kavri?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Robertson, aye. Uh, Mr. Moncure?
Aye.
And Mr. Duggan?
Aye.
All right, next up, resolution endorsing same kind of application, this is made in the catch where eighty percent is paid for by the grant and twenty percent by locality or in coordination, and this in particular is just by hopefully a collaboration of localities. JC, you want to read us into this one?
Sure. So, uh, this one go a little bit more in depth, uh, I didn't speak about it during the complan. So, the proposed route for the path runs along two oh five, uh, and we get access to James Monroe birthplace, uh, as well as two ancient cemetery's, uh, one of which I think is being restored right now, um, or already was. So, the reason this project is really important is because the town status is the birthplace of James Monroe, uh, who was the fifth president of the U S. It's an important, unique aspect of, uh, our heritage that should be easily accessible to all residents of the town and our visitors. Right now, you can really only get there by car. And so, that, that this project really serves one of the main points of, of VDOT's transportation alternative program, um, and that it's, it's, it is giving, uh, an alternative way to get somewhere that you can only get from motorized transportation. So, um, uh, so right now Monroe Park is open year round, and it gets thousands of visitors in the summer months, and that's when visitors are tracked. They project that, uh, in the non-summer months, they, they get several hundred. Again, it's not tracked. But so, yeah, the execution of this project would, uh, allow for increased education for the Monroe birthplace, um, promote exercise and public health, do the walk, the walk and bike aspect. And again, what I think the point is to increase access, uh, for both townspeople who run their own heritage, uh, and tourists to learn something unique about the town. I just think it'd be awesome if, uh, kids could bike there and, um, do something different, have another option that you don't need a car for. Families could take nice trips, but anyway, so the fiscal impact, uh, this one's a bit more refined. So, the total cost is, uh, one million and just about a quarter million on top of that, so, um, the town will seek and get under a million in grant funds and will offer about a quarter million as a match. And again, just want to reiterate the fiscal impact of it, it's, it is reimbursement, um, so we would need to pump those funds up front. And again, you do have a letter of support in front of you, and, yep.
The county also wrote a letter of support for this project.
They did?
Yeah.
That was part of the application?
Yeah.
Yep. That's great.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing, unlike I did last time, but I didn't have anybody to sign up. So, open a public hearing for this one at eight thirty-nine P M. Yes, please.
Susan Mack, fifteen forty-one Irving Avenue. I, if I could, um, um, get Bucky Door here, she would say I'm very much in support of it, so I don't know if I get two votes, one for her and one for me, but definitely in favor of this. Thank you.
That's right.
She Mack, fifteen forty-one Irving Avenue, absolutely in support of this. I think in any way that we can increase our ability for our townspeople as well as the tourists to be able to get to another feature of the town without having to get in a car is awesome, whether they, uh, walk, bike, or if it's big enough for golf or any of that, it, it, it doesn't matter. I think it's all good and being able to continually incorporate the history into the town is a very positive thing, very much a positive thing.
Horse sticks on them.
Did quote their stick? Yes.
Horse drawn carriages.
Yeah. You know, I have, uh, often thought that, um, the town should embrace, uh, James Monroe's birthplace more completely. It seems like it's such a, uh, a natural for us to encourage people in whatever way we can to go there. I mean, we are immersed in history here, and I feel like, I mean, of course, our name is Colonial Beach, but, but at the same time, it feels like we don't embrace it quite as much as we could or should, and I think that having a bike path to, um, to the birthplace is, is a great idea. In fact, I've even often thought maybe it'd be a good idea to annex all the way to the birthplace. But at a minimum, I think having a, uh, a, a path that will bring the townspeople and our tourists, uh, visitors closer to the connection to the birthplace is a good, great idea.
Anybody else? Yeah.
David Loser, Irving Avenue. I'm not quite as supportive of this one as the other one, um, for the sheer fact that the people on the north side of town have been asking for a park for ten, fifteen years now, and we're talking about spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the path going to possibly private property, um, most of it's county, and so I do not support it. Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing first. Okay. I, is there anybody else? Eight forty-one P M, I close public hearing.
Um, I'm, I'm a little bit of a history buff, especially when it comes to things that happened between our colonial days and our Civil War days, not as much as some people are. But it was always a, a fascinating time for me whenever I had the opportunity to teach it. And I would much rather see something like Monroe's birthplace, um, and I've lived on the north side of, um, town, and I've raised four children in this community, and I think there's far more value in historical things, and that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Moncure? Yep.
Uh, this is a project that I would like to see come to fruition in some point in the future. But I'm about ready to make an argument against my personal interest in this. It would be exceedingly nice for me to be able to walk from my home to the Monroe birthplace.
Yeah, I didn't think about that.
Okay. But we're talking about committing a quarter of a million dollars of local funds to this at a time when we've had nothing but discussions this evening about the inadequacy of parking in downtown Colonial Beach. And as far as I'm concerned, it, it, as nice as it would be, it's not necessary, and we have to at some point make the distinction between what's nice and what's necessary. And believe I hope they'll walk there, but I can drive there, so it's not necessary. And as much as it pains me and as much as it gets my personal interest, I'm going to vote against this.
Madam Mayor, could I propose a motion to accept so that we can actually discuss this?
Yes.
So, I would move.
All right, there's motions, there's second?
Second.
Okay, so we are now officially discussing it, although I think we got your point.
Second?
We are now officially discussing that, but yes, we got your point. Okay. Should I move to the side a little bit? Yeah, go.
Quick question, so if we were to vote to proceed with the grant, it doesn't commit us to accepting the grant if we, if we got it?
No, this would be a, a non-binding resolution of support.
Did you hear about this, Tom?
Here's the question of power, geez, I think it's the wrong power of support.
Yeah.
This has been in our complan, I believe, for some time, and I think it's something that we talked about at our goal setting session in January. So, I don't think it's something that we're doing just because this grant happened to appear. But it says it is in our priorities and the money's available, um, and that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, could the county pitch in to work that?
Look at it in terms of we have one point two, three, four million that we'd have to fund it with first and then be reimbursed.
I understand that.
So...
Yes, but we're not going to serve a bad situation to do that. That's true.
Can I say something to that?
Yeah.
When we got these reimbursable, um, grants or even loans, we just went through, um, a horrible experience with the water meters, um, it was reimbursed, we had a comp of four point three million dollars in that process that held our money. So, we had to pay it up front, we had to wait for it to get back, and it was like almost a two-month turnaround. It put a big financial strain on us to make sure we had cash on hand. So, when you do, I would say, when you do consider accepting these kinds of grants, that you take into consideration the cash layout we have to do while waiting for that reimbursement.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
What is the timeframe for receiving this? Is it the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four timeframe?
Same, same as with your timeframe, so we would have some time to plan budgetary things if we did decide to undertake the project.
And we do hope to have a parking solution before twenty twenty-four, correct?
So, that would be what we've done. Yes.
Which, which, I'm just trying to, Mr. Moncure's, um, statement that we would want to make sure that we prioritize correctly, and knowing that parking is a necessity, uh, for specifically our downtown and, and wherever else that we have need for parking, this may not be the, the first thing that comes up, but worthwhile, even, you know, for your personal items, that this would be something that we should go after. Again, we're not saying that we're gonna sign off on every single thing, but I mean, we're, we're putting our endorsement on this, correct?
Correct.
So, okay.
I think, uh, there are many items on our C I P that are, um, including this is on our capital improvement plan, and so the matching funds would be allocated in that fund. I mean, it's not a general budget item. And we are obviously no, the next month could tell some tales about what that capital improvement plan looks like. At this time, because of the intensity of the, and the length of the planning required to get one of these, I would be in favor of the resolution at this time, understanding that several things need to fall into place in order to actually make the priority, uh, realistic. I think that's a very valid point. So, we'd be in support of this resolution because I think the application is noteworthy and it's on the C I P and it's in the complan. I mean, it's been in the complan for, since before the two thousand and nine plan. So, I would like to see those things that have been sitting on, around, get done, finally get done. And the parking plan is sort of a new issue that's come up, and, uh, these fires take a while to put out, they take a long planning time, they don't happen magically, solutions do not happen magically. I think there's a real opportunity in this to feel like there is an accomplished task that has been identified for, for a significant time period in this community. And also, I value the historical aspect of Monroe's birthplace. If you have not been to the birthplace inside and talked to a docent there, you are missing out. You are missing out. Uh, everybody should go and they should take their children. I'm serious, I really am. So, it's really, it's very, very important, and the history that has happened in this county and literally where we live and breathe every day is phenomenal. And I think it's worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think it is. I think that's actually a small price to pay for accessibility to a historical monument, a place that may have history. Any other?
I just have one question, cause I think I had asked it before, um, one-on-one, but this, this, um, particular grant is for non-motorized traffic, right? Or is there an allowance for something like a golf cart or scooter or?
I, I think that the, the, the goal of the VDOT program is to have non-motorized transportation options to places that previously did not have that kind of access. Now, cars, if a path wide enough to accommodate, that's a different situation.
Is there any restriction on horse-drawn carriages?
Not that I saw, and, uh, we're actually, uh, discussing on that, which side of two oh five it would go on, and I think one side just had the horse farm. That would, that would be non-motorized, so we could make it walk by horse trail, and that would be, I think, maybe restricted in that given, but we were really thinking it would be on the other side probably, two oh five, but...
Yeah. Are you going to get on a horse and go down the highway?
I do want to record you reflected when I was out of order earlier, I was spotted a ditch.
Okay. Bill, anything else?
No, we're ready to vote.
Okay. All right, uh, so I have a motion and second, I'll do a roll call vote. Doctor St. Sullivan?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Kavri?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Ross? Um, Mr. Moncure?
No.
Mr. Duggan? Other aye, in support of the resolution, noting that priorities are always in the need of another. Yeah, I mean, like, there's always that too. Okay, uh, we added, we amended the agenda to include the Dwight Avenue extension, um, resolution. There go I have that. Yes, okay. Okay, so this is a revenue sharing program, not the TAP grant. Lisa, you wanna write? Oh, no, not Lisa, uh, Rob, Ms. Murphy. You wanna walk us into this?
Yeah, the, and like you said, uh, this is a revenue sharing program, and, uh, what revenue sharing works is a fifty-fifty grant, or this is working for transportation. So, I don't, I'm lucky enough to have the, the big ratio, and this one is also, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven to twenty-eight. So you have to get out in front of these if you're going to get on the, on the agenda. And as I said, this is for, for, this is part of the extension. Many of you know that we, we have some difficulties, anytime there are issues on 205 and getting from, you know, that emergency vehicles or whatever to, into Riverside Meadows, um, with no access point, vehicular access point, other than 205. So, what we're looking, looking at is, uh, basically is a three hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollar cost here that would be expected at fifty, you know, so each for a three hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and nineteen grant. But the, but that would actually connect the, the two portions of town.
And this is a, a public state, I mean, part of the application is, um, is directly related to having secondary access to both neighborhoods, if something happens on 205. We obviously know the bike path has its limitations. There's also major utilities under the bike path, there's other reasons that, you know, the extension of Dwight Avenue is a piece of location for this. But ambulance services, secondary emergency route for evacuation needs, and when we just did that table top, I was like, you're right, so.
Preliminary communications with Virginia Department of Transportation and the pre, in the pre-application process lead me to believe that this is an acceptable project.
This is extremely important.
Yes, and they realize it.
Anybody else have any? This is just a resolution at this time, we didn't advertise for public hearing. So this is a resolution in support. Is that correct? Yeah.
Resolution for the application.
Um, I'd just like to thank you, Rob, for all the work that you've done on this particular project. This was identified as a need, um, was prioritized by council in January, and the pre-app, application process happened while we did not have, uh, India in place and you were acting. So, if we had not gone through that process, we would not be at the point today to talk about this revenue sharing program to provide this really vital, uh, next step in our, and when people talk about infrastructure, this road and emergency services and response time, this is infrastructure also, this is critical to, uh, that. And obviously, you have to get ahead, way ahead of these things, every twenty-seven, twenty-eight. It's two thousand and one, right?
Two thousand and twenty-one. Twenty-one.
Two thousand and twenty-one. It's two thousand and twenty-five.
It's on record, by the way.
So that's six years from now. Yeah, six years. You're not gonna be here until this turn. I mean, that's how far you have to get on VDOT schedule, six years in advance. It's incredible. I probably won't be here either, yes. Okay. All right, I, is there any, um, is there a motion to the resolution to endorse the VDOT revenue sharing program on Dwight Avenue extension?
So moved.
Okay. Okay, is there any further discussion?
Is there a public hearing required?
There, we did not advertise for a public hearing, if there is one, we, we'll have to do that October. You want to hear a roll call vote?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Is the Dwight Avenue extension, does the, does the golf cart paths still stay in place with the?
Yeah. It doesn't change the path. This is a real road. Yeah. Like to VDOT standards and two-way traffic and, yeah.
See vehicles.
Yeah. It, that can fit a, a fire truck, yes.
Shoulders.
Right.
I was just envisioning the bike path seeing, probably, this level, like, that's why I started coming down with this thing.
Two different roads. Dwight, the bypass on you, Clay?
Oh, yeah, you're right, thank you.
Oh, yeah, good clarification. Okay. All right, um, Dr. Self Sullivan? Are you ready, or do you want more discussion on this?
Well, I, I just need to know, do we need a public hearing before we can vote?
It's a resolution like the other one.
It's just a resolution to be, to be in support of. We don't have to do the public, yeah, legally, you do not have to have a public hearing.
All right, so I didn't, I didn't hear anything.
If I'm right on the other one, that public comment area was, was it, that's a part of the grant application itself, so even that wasn't a legal requirement, it's just something that the grant itself wanted to happen. So no, they...
Aye.
So?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Ms. Duggan?
Aye.
Mr. Ron Ketter?
Aye.
Ms. Duggan? All right. And Indiana? Last thing, resolution for the twenty-one, approval and authorization of the town manager to execute a contract with financial advisors. I knew there was a piece of public comment earlier that said that these funds have been earmarked, that is my crew, or something like that, I think. Ms. Duggan, is there something?
Yes, um, so we have, uh, recognized that we have a need to, um, contract with, uh, some financial advisors, um, to tackle some projects for us, uh, doing a refinancing of our existing debt, um, helping us make sure we have current reserve levels and fund balances, um, looking for investment opportunities for the money we have, um, so we can plan for our future needs. This is time-sensitive, um, this, um, for a lot of reasons. Uh, lower, uh, interest rates, we're not gonna stay low, we would like to try to give, um, and work with these lower interest rates. Um, we have the ARPA money that is now to save, and if, or checking to have, it would help to invest that to maximize some, um, interest on that while we were waiting to spend it. So we, um, for the Code of Virginia, we can piggyback on the existing contract. So this is what we are intending to do. Davenport has provided the town with financial services in the past. Uh, recently, they were our advisor as financial advisor, um, to give the, uh, BPSA school bond to build a new school. Um, they came on June sixteenth and addressed this council, um, with a overview of our debt service and capital plan, and some recommendations on, um, refinancing. Um, I said, as we started prior to expedite this, we met with them, um, to discuss specific tasks and the projects that we are looking to, um, contract services for. Our alternative would be to, for use our own RFP, get through the RFP process, but we're delaying it for a month or more to get any kind of financial services during. The fiscal impact, the contract, um, that they had proposed to us, uh, lists out the specific tests, um, and the cost would not exceed a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for all the five tasks that we asked them to perform at this time. So today, we are asking that to, um, authorize the town manager to execute the contract with Davenport Company for financial advisory services.
Is it same thing the county was doing?
Yes, they refinancing a lot of their debt.
Yeah. Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, I think we've already made this list. Okay. Uh, Dr. Self Sullivan?
Um...
Uh, Mr. Allison? I was gonna switch it up, but then you got ready.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Duggan?
Aye.
And if there are any reason to go into closed meeting, being none, I would like a motion to adjourn. So moved, is there a second?
Seven.
A neighbor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, final three. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for sticking with...